Call our meeting to order. This is a work session of the Maron Borough Council, the Borough of Seaside Park County, Bojent State of New Jersey, held on Thursday, May 25, 2023, advertised for 7:00 p.m. Pursuant to the provisions of New Jersey's Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting was properly provided by transmitting the notice of the meeting for publication in the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger on January 4, 2023. Notice of the meeting of the governing body has also been posted in the corridor of the municipal building and in the office of the municipal clerk. Roll call?
Councilmember Amadou?
President.
Councilmember Condos?
She's excused this evening.
Councilmember Pratt?
Here.
Councilmember Dr. McHugh?
Here.
Councilmember Lo?
Here.
Council President Michael?
Here.
Mayor Peterson?
Here.
The next item is for informational purposes, and certainly we can announce that at the regular meeting as well, and that's our annual Memorial Day service scheduled for this one day, May 29, 9:30 a.m., on the Seaside Park Police Station lawn. And we observed moments ago, the color guard is practicing, and I know everything else is coming together for a lot of members of the team, many of whom are right here in the room, and thanking everybody for that celebration and putting it together. The next three items are really for informational purposes. I gave a lot of information. I get copied on input all the time on this issue. It's ongoing. It's there've been a number of hearings, some at the federal level, some at the state level on the issues, and it's certainly a more extensive issue than the whale desk, but that's one that brought it to a head most recently, a deer and the vessel surveys and the sonar testing. It's the reconstruction of wind farms and their effects. So there's a lot of information there that's come from various sources. I don't know if anybody has any comments on that or Memorial Day. They're all just for information purposes. The next item is discussion of parking spaces marked on side streets. There's an email received on May 2, and a response, and I know our attorney's office had been involved in some issues that are similar to that that had taken place in Point Pleasant Beach. And I know we have the chief here who has a familiarity with the issue as to those that were on the council back when this came up some years ago. I don't know if anybody wants to take the lead or input on it.
I mean, my recollection, the last time we had this come up, we did have several requests for parking. What we did, I'm going to say about three years ago or so, is that we implemented the 24-hour parking pass to try to help accommodate some of the parking issues. It didn't really go off that well because I think we only had about a dozen the first year, and then it didn't continue thereafter. Still in our code as an option, but it wasn't really what was being, I guess, looked for. So this is kind of, I'd say, on your plate.
Is this about the painting of the lines?
Painting the lines, but I think some people want parking also in front of their house, like resident parking.
This was someone who wanted, I guess, after, I guess, during the summer, as you know, July and August mainly, people come down to go to the beach and they just park, however, you know, giving any thought as to maximizing the parking area. So the person thought that we should do striping to lay out on all the ocean streets.
Well, I don't think this is a wise idea, Councilor. I'm sorry?
I know. I'm just stating her case.
Okay, I understand. I understand, Councilmember. I understand. Okay, because it would be too costly to do, and who's going to maintain it?
I was talking about.
I'm sorry?
I wanted to hear your statement.
Okay, I apologize.
Yeah, I mean, roughly, there's probably 40 or so parking places per street. You know, if you multiply that by the 30 kind of streets that we have, you know, it's like 1,200 parking places. I think Karen had come up with a number for how much it costs to do. What was it, 300 or so?
Yeah, I mean, just to re-stripe and to repaint the numbers on our existing metered spaces, the ones that generate revenue, it's about 700 spaces, that was about over $35,000.
Yeah, so this is, and I believe the chief had a number, I guess, the, in the past, we had got an estimate, like this might go back to maybe 2016 or something, and...
To quick a bit, if I could give a little background, it was when Bob Mutucci was in power, Murph was here. It was the way, from what I remember, it came up, people were having issues getting into their driveway because everyone parks up to their apron.
Right.
So they came up with this idea. The problem is, remember, we're going to be measuring out 20 feet for each space, so you're going to lose a lot of spaces. The other thing was, to do the initial painting, you'd really want to, you know, I said to Murph, we should have a firm come in and make the markings for us. We're not equipped to do the whole ocean side of Seaside Park. I believe at the time, the estimate was 75,000.
Wow, yeah, I'm getting those measurements.
Don't hold me with what I remember.
Yeah, because we had issues with some of the lines from the stop signs being a different length on each street.
These are all different, these are all different issues.
Well, they're all related to parking now because...
They're all related to parking, but what the chief's talking about is it was really a, I think it was 7th, 6th and 7th, was it? They just started.
6th, 7th.
It was like a little experiment, see how it went, and then there were, a lot of people complained that, just that, they lost the, well, it used to be able to fit two cars in front of the house, now I can only fit one. And, and, you know, so it's sort of, I mean, there are a lot of sides to this thing. At the time, the general idea and the decision was, well, we're just going to do away with them because it caused more problems than it was worth.
Correct.
Yeah.
The residents itself are the ones who stopped it.
When they look in sight, you got all these squares all down, up and down these streets, square blocks, and you go down a street, all you see is these square blocks where people park. I don't, I don't think that's, I'm against it, I'll tell you right now. I'm against it. So the cost, number one. Number two, like the chief maintained it, he was going to paint them every year, and when we lose probably spot, we lose part, I hate to say it, but, you know, it's a two month thing, I understand. It's a two month thing. If you came from Mars now and said, "Park it," say, "What are you smoking? Park it, park it any way you want." But that doesn't happen June, July and August. We know that. We know that.
That's a good analogy.
We know that.
Even to add to that.
The analogy is, Doctor, in a little time, we'll be looking at these squares. No cars in them.
Right. And to add to that, we're still, over probably the next 10 years or so, we still have Phase 3B and 3C, you know, water sewer, Phase 3B and C, which means that the streets will be ripped up because we've only done like about 11 streets, I think. So we still have another 20 or so to go.
There are more, actually.
I think we did 12. We're at the island, right? 14th to Island, so that's 15 blocks, but there's more than, yeah, there's, there's, there's some scattered on the way up, and it's on east side of Central. So, yeah. There's, there's a, I don't know. I think there's, it's a deeper issue than this, you know. Somebody has to come out with a proposal.
I have one, actually, but I've been holding it for a long time.
But a parking plan that's really comprehensive, considers a whole lot of things, but once they started with the dunes and everything, the federal government got involved, the beach, last thing I thought we wanted to do is do any kind of restriction on parking because they tried that in Manlooke, and I think they had got, they had to open up a whole new area just for parking. Is that right? Thank you, guys?
Yeah, and that was a big issue. I know your firm was involved in Point Beach, went up through the Superior Court.
Right. It has to do with access to the beaches and everything, so...
It didn't end up well for the municipality, so...
Anyway, those are all the other facts.
Anyone else on that particular?
Yeah, I kind of think that in the interim of investigating maybe options, there are plenty of times I see cars parked facing the opposite way, in the middle of the other side of the street, kind of parked in the way you're describing, backed into head-on parking. I mean, I think that needs to be enforced, and that's not really necessarily happening. So I think that is something that can help. Do you know what I'm talking about when you see that? I think it's ridiculous. It's a hazard, and usually... Yeah, like if I'm coming down the right, they're going this way and parking on the other side of the street, facing in the direction of incoming traffic. Usually, that's the car taking up two spots. So, I mean, right there, we could at least start by enforcing that. That would be, you know, something.
Somebody did that one night, run around ticketed like 200 cars or something that night.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that didn't go up big. It was a big waste of time and money, but, I guess it could be enforced, you know what I mean?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, but then, you know what you had? Then you had people saying, "Well, you know, if I face it that way, with the strong northeast winds, if it goes into my engine, it's going to blow salt into my hood," and so that's why I parked in that direction. I don't know, that's a big argument for that. All right, it's tough. Parking's tough. Yeah, but we got a letter from somebody today, though, that was pretty, pretty critical of how the town looks right now.
We're going to address that, Doctor, tonight.
Yeah, we sure, tonight we're going to address it?
I'm going to, I'm talking to the Mr. President about that.
The trailers, the...
Yeah, trailers and...
Storage on the streets.
Cars, yeah, you know what we're talking about.
I think there's a lot of, I tend to agree with a lot.
Summer's got to be done. Just can't have boats parked there all winter because they don't want to go in the marina. I get, this is, there's more boats on the street than there are in the marina.
I don't know about that.
I know that.
Yeah, that's a, that's a...
It's a strain. I understand that. But go, you know, and I'm one of the persons that lived there, so I'm basically affected by it.
Live where?
On 9th and 10th Avenue, around there, where the boat's been up there since the time of Memorial.
Well, why don't we do a committee meeting, if you'll join us, and let's try to address some of that?
Absolutely, Mr. President, absolutely.
Maybe we'll plan that sometime next week.
Plan a meeting, and then we'll come back with some rules.
Some ideas, and you can participate in the feedback and let us know what's reasonable and feasible and whatever.
All right. I'm ready, Mr. President.
For the purposes of the resident that sent this email, and I did promise our response by May 31st, is the, what is the pleasure of the council for the tone of my response to be, that we're not doing it, we're still investigating it, it's not feasible for all these reasons, and there's a lot of good reasons why it's just not feasible, including legal ones.
Is the location specific? I know that at the north end of town, there's no, there's a lot more properties with no off-street parking. That comes to be a problem for a lot of folks as well. So her location might have some situations that might be different than what I'm aware of. I didn't know where she lives, so there could be some, is there anything relative to that that would make...
No, but I think if you do speak to her, we'll enforce what's on the books now, which one is 18 a.m. to 6 a.m. It has to be patched.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's the other issue. I'm talking about the 6th Avenue issue right now, the strike and...
Oh, the parking spots.
Well, we couldn't do it before. I mean, now the Memorial Day is right here, there's no way we possibly ever get done. So tell you to think about it in January. And then you'll bring it up, and then you guys have plenty of time before season comes around next year.
Sounds like a plan.
You could probably get the history and why it was not done eight, nine years ago, but it was...
Oh, yeah, I have a lot of information.
I'm just saying. Details.
I can see if that old literature has the estimate from the private company. That might be still in some of the old files.
And then we can just double it for today's prices.
I would think, right?
I think it's best for him to do so.
Yes, I would agree.
Yeah. Anything else on that, that point?
I'm an observation.
The next item is discussion of authorizing the sale of surplus property no longer needed for public use on an online auction website via Unisabid. Auction runs June 12 to 25. Auction ends June 25, 5:00 p.m.
Beach chairs and umbrellas. These are Mark branded, beach chairs and umbrellas, plus some barricades the police department does no longer need.
You're selling stuff too, Chief?
No, not those. These are same old.
We're going to keep those military vehicles?
I hope not.
Can we sell them? Who would want them?
Like, the ones the town does own, a couple of them, a couple of them have to go back to the base. So once we own, yes, you can sell.
You know, use and do it, Chief? It's just rotten away this...
You could discuss it in a committee meeting, come up with a decision.
So the information on how to bid on those beach chairs and umbrellas on Unisabid, we'll put that on our website the next couple of days. It'll be on our social media platform, but it's as easy as using eBay, if you've ever done that. You go in, you create an account, you give them an email address, you give them your credit card information, and then when the auction opens up, you just, it'll probably be under the, there's different categories, likely it'll be under the furniture category. And just go in there, we'll have pictures up there of what you're bidding on, and place a bid. It's like having an auction without an auctioneer.
So maybe we could put 66I Street up that way.
So do you know as it's ongoing whether you'll high bid or low, how's it work?
I, I think that they will tell you what the current bid is. So, and...
It'll tell you how many bids it's worth.
And if you just add 50 cents, a dollar, there's no limits or...
Yeah, you just, just be higher, but what they won't, if people start to bid towards the very end, like in the last couple of minutes, they'll continue the bidding because they don't want someone to, like, keep jumping over somebody right to the very end. So I'm not sure what that timeframe is, whether there has to be no bids when they close the auction, but...
Is it just like one, one hundred minute time?
Yeah, we're selling the beach chairs and the umbrella as one at a time.
One at a time?
Right, the...
They're listed at the same time.
So we have, we have...
So you bid on each one individually?
Right, we have three different things. We're selling the umbrellas, there's 10 of those. We're selling beach chairs with a footrest, there's 18 of those, and we're selling one beach chair without a footrest, just one of those, all individually. And the police barricades, we no longer need, they're going in like a lot of 25, it's two
And then when it goes to general...
Correct.
Anybody else on that issue?
Nope.
The next are items that also have resolutions for the regular meeting. The first is discussion of authorizing the execution of an 18-month service agreement with Integrated Technical Systems in. And you see the...
It's for the parking casks.
Background there. And this would keep them in place, the warranty?
The 10 new ones will have a warranty. These are the 11 old ones that'll be under the service agreement, the 10 new ones will cover the warranties so they don't have to get a service agreement.
Okay, and just for instance, he came, agreed today, and it was a $6,000. That's what it, what it cost us, it was covered under the warranty. But to say now, when they come, it's a big number.
A big deal, okay.
So I think it's working.
And plus, they were very patient with us in terms of waiting to get the service agreement in place and holding off, and they were very, very helpful to us.
No, we were getting the new ones, and, right, yeah, good.
The other advantage of having 18 months is because the budget will have passed, I mean, we got in trouble this time because we had to wait for the budget to be passed before we could put the service agreement in place. This way, the budget will have already been adopted by the time this agreement comes into play, so it won't be any delays.
Very good. Anyone else on that one? The, the next is Resolution 223-166, on for consideration at the regular meeting, discussion of recommendation from the chief of the police department amending Chapter 435 entitled Vehicles and Traffic. And that, as per the input from the chief, those are a number of spots?
Well, I think you all have the list in your pocket. I don't know if the thing we have to do tonight is, we have two new applications after, and I'm asking for approval. They're on here as a new applicants. I don't know if you have their package or want their package. I have them.
They were added in the list, they have the renewals.
Yeah, remember how we go through the renewals?
Right.
If anyone wants a copy of this, I have them. If not, I can approve quickly.
And those, those are two spots where the individuals qualified for the act, for the ratification under the statute.
The first one, 25, Decatur Ave, Apartment B. He enclosed all of his paperwork, his handicap placard, his hardship letter, a copy of his $25 fee, check that was paid, so everything's in order. So I'm asking that council, my recommendation is that it's included. And then the next one is, this is DeAndrea, 126 N Street, same thing, she has, they both have handicap placards, Florida placards, wants a spot in front of her house, it just happens, there's one there, because this is one of those properties in town, there's two houses on the same lot, the people in the back forfeited the spot, so we're good to go. She has a hardship letter, she paid her fee, and my recommendation is that it be approved.
So those two, then, if the council's so inclined, would be added to the already published memorialized list we have?
No, they're on there.
Okay, they're already there, okay.
And also on here are the ones that will be discontinued.
Yeah.
Just so we all know, I have four brand new ones sitting on my desk downstairs. I'll send them come in.
They just came in.
But I'll do a little background, and I'll bring it up here next month.
Okay.
I don't think that's an issue, right, just adding it to the ordinance?
We'd have to do the ordinance.
You have to read it twice and go through the same procedure, but... That's all right.
What do you do with the old ones? Do you paint over everything?
They black them, yeah, black them.
Paint it black?
Anyone else on that item D then? The next E is discussion of request for permission from the beautification committee. It's to place two 16 by 22 ceramic flower pots at the N Street bathhouse, and you have the copies of the emails included from Maggie, who is the co-chair, Maggie Huzar of the beautification committee, asking our permission. And they generously offered to actually purchase the ceramic pots and to maintain them.
Maggie, no, no way.
She's all right.
And the other, we discussed this at the meeting with Eric and Josh, they have no objection, so...
Maggie, anybody else? So give them the go-ahead?
Absolutely, I think that's great.
With our thanks.
With our thanks, absolutely.
Maggie, what kind of flowers you putting there? That's the color, what kind? Roses, Santas?
No, 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 he has to be hard to beat, young ones.
Okay. Not that I would know the difference.
I mean, that's, those are the published items that we had. Anyone else on council, other work session items? We had the one, sort of, we'll go to the committee?
We will, yes.
You'll go to committee.
Overall discussion?
Yes, we'll go to committee.
Anybody else for a work session?
I guess I wanted to mention that there was, DCA put on a boardwalk stakeholder, holder meeting for two days this week. I know on the second day, Karen and at least myself was listening in, and I guess the bottom line, the state is, if, if the budget gets approved next year, they're looking to provide $100 million for a boardwalk fund up and down the coast for municipalities and towns that have boardwalks in their towns. So I just want to make you aware of that, you know, there's money out there.
You know, I knew you and Karen, thank both of you, everybody to monitor it.
Eric was on that, too.
Oh, yeah, Eric certainly was on there. They're looking to get proposals by the end of this year, perhaps in the fall, and then the allocation of funds would be in 2024. And then if you were, if you're picked, okay, you must spend all the money by 2026 because that's when the money runs out because it's based on the COVID relief fund or whatever they called it. It may require a local match, they weren't sure about that. Just give me some of the highlights. And we need a boardwalk development plan, they seem like that, but the, the highest scoring will be to those towns that provide a solution that has the best resiliency, as opposed to Yellow Pine, for example, probably wouldn't be up there. You know, they're looking for more something like Trex or, you know, something in that type of material, something that would last more than, you know, 15 years.
Sounds promising.
Definitely. I mean, there's hope.
Yeah.
But you got to qualify, Bill?
We have, you got to put your hat, and then you got to pick what towns you give the money to, is that correct?
Well, you have to put together a development plan, yes, you have to be picked. And it'll be based on, as I said, resiliency, need, cost of the project, things like that.
Replace the existing infrastructure instead of trying to build something new, so exactly what we're trying to...
Yes, that's true, yes. You know, you can't add on five more blocks of boardwalk. I just want you to think.
Thank you.
And we are working with T and M right now on the plan for the boardwalk.
Let me see, supposedly works, yeah.
We're going to push that along, I will say.
Any other work session items from council? If not, we'll go into the audience if any public comments on the work session items, if you have any, if you could give your name and address into the record.
Mitch Cobbleton, 204 10th Avenue, Uptown 2, Bill, tonight, this afternoon, the governor did actually go on the news and announced, and he did us a favor because he talked about the Jersey coast, and then he said specifically, "I want our seaside to look a lot better." Obviously, it was generic, but he really mentioned this. One suggestion, as you put your proposal together, resiliency doesn't only refer to the boardwalk itself. So we should emphasize what we've done with our dune system that protected the town in Sandy, it also protected our boardwalk, and we should emphasize that as a key resiliency factor.
Good point, great.
The second thing is to the chief or for our attorney, just a question on the parking. I know there was a concern expressed last year about encroaching on a driveway's apron. Do we have a regulation about how close to an apron anybody can park?
No, I don't know where... No, this, some of the state statutes will address that, though, as to the area, the distance that you have to give to clear driveway, uh, apron.
So if a homeowner calls the police and says someone is parked over my edge and is preventing me, we have an opportunity to enforce something?
Yeah, I believe it's 394135 or 39416.
Okay, prosecutor.
Putting that other guy in shame.
The last one.
Any other public comments or comments? Yes, Maggie?
Maggie Huzar, 1312 Berkeley Lane. I want to thank the mayor and the council for approving our flower pots, and we will keep them pretty.
Thank you, as well, on all of your committee.
Somebody wanted to put them, like, Seaside Heights has them at every entrance, too many entrances to be, couldn't afford that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other, yes, hi?
Yeah. Want to put my two cents in on the parking lot striping. I think it's inappropriate for Seaside Park, makes it look very commercial, doesn't necessarily gain a spot. I think from the traffic engineer's point of view, where it works, if you go to Ortley or some places, Bay... Lea, or some places, Baywood, places where there's no curb, and you have no idea where the person's driveway is, makes a lot of sense. But here, we're very defined on where somebody's driveway is, and having people calling the police constantly because someone's over in line, I just think, just don't think it's appropriate parking.
Thanks, Mike, I have a full agreement.
Any other public comments on work session items? Hearing none, I'd close the public portion, I'd entertain a motion to briefly adjourn the work session, then we'll begin the regular. Mr. President, Michael?
I'll second.